The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
I call to order this January 5th meeting of the Apple Valley Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is an approval of the agenda. Any changes from staff?
Mr. Chair, we have two changes. Before you at your chairs is an illustrative site plan that was submitted this week for item 4A, a public hearing on lakeside of Diamond Path. And it's just an additional exhibit for you to have, and the applicant requested that we share it in an 11 by 17 size, just so you could see it. Second, at item 5A, the action item on the Apple Valley Industrial, the action number five has been updated to recognize that some updated plans have been received after the Planning Commission materials went out. And the elevation plan in particular should be approved based on the January 4th plan. And Alex Sharp will walk you through that when he does his presentation. Those are my changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Any changes from the commission? Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Deekman, seconded by Commissioner Scanlon. All those, any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Motion carried. Next item of business is a consent agenda. This requires a routine enactment. If there's no objection, it's just a simple motion without discussion. What's the pleasure with the commission?
Mr. Chair, recommend approval of the agenda items, A and B.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Scanlon, seconded by Commissioner Kurtz. All those favors signify by saying aye.
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 Posed nay. Motion carried. The next item on the agenda is item 4A. We will now open the public hearing for item number 4A. The affidavit of publication for the notice of public hearing is available for inspection in the planning department. Everyone wishing to speak at this public hearing should be sure to fill out the attendance roster and virtually register with the meeting organizer, including names and addresses, so that accurate records can be maintained. We'll begin the procedure with a brief presentation by city staff, followed by a presentation by the petitioner of the hearing. Upon the conclusion of the presentation, city staff will be asked to comment if proposals conformance with pertinent regulations and policies. After that, comments will be taken in general public. Kathy?
Good evening, planning commissioners. This request before you this evening, as the chair has noted, is a request from the developer, GMH Land Development, and the property owners, Randy and Carolyn Buller, for two actions, two considerations. One is a public hearing to consider subdivision by preliminary plat to create six single-family parcels, and then a variance from sections 153.30, 153.55C, to allow shared private driveways for access to Diamond Path. The property is made up of three parcels totaling 8.1 acres, owned by the Bullers, and addressed as 13009 Diamond Path. The property is bounded on the west by Farquhar Lake, on the east by Diamond Path, a county road, and then north and south are abutting single-family lots. The property is zoned R1 single-family residential with a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. And the property, because it abuts Farquhar Lake, is within the Shoreland Overlay Zoning District. The Shoreland Overlay Zoning District is a district that requires additional measures and protections to protect the city's designated water bodies. Farquhar Lake is designated as a recreational development lake by the DNR. The Shoreland Overlay Zoning District sits on top of the R1 zone, and any time the zoning requirements conflict, the more restrictive of the two will apply. This is just a historical photo to help the planning commission to kind of envision how the property looked in 1951. And this is a little bit interesting because the property line now follows this former Diamond Path alignment. So as we move then to the existing conditions, north then is to the left, you see where the property line kind of follows that former road alignment. So as far as existing conditions then with the site, the home is located on the north side of the property. The plan will be to create a separate lot for it, and then the home and the bluff will be combined into one lot and left undisturbed. The site has a wetland that's been designated, and that, all the required official steps of designation have taken place. So the developer will be required to do buffering and special protection measures to ensure that that stays, that the wetlands are protected. The preliminary plat then shows the subdivision of the property into six lots. Again, lot one on the north side will contain the existing home. And then that will allow for the creation of five new lots for construction of new single-family homes. The plat is set up, the subdivision is set up, to meet the requirements of the underlying zoning districts. And it does, the lot area, lot width, all of those things, those requirements are met. The plat shows that 10 feet of right-of-way will be dedicated for Diamond Path. And again, Diamond Path is a county road, and the county has determined that the site will only be allowed two access points. So that's the reason why they are requesting a variance, is to be able to allow shared driveway access out to Diamond Path. Typically, or normally, the two sections of the subdivision code that I quoted require direct access. A single-family lot is required to have direct access to a public street, and that would not be the case under this scenario. So the site plan then shows the layout of the site. The green that I'm indicating is showing the buffer area, but the five new lots, the two new access points coming in off of Diamond Path would lead to a cul-de-sac that would be large enough for fire vehicles, fire trucks, to be able to turn around. So that is kind of the, how the developer has set up the site. One of the things that's interesting and a question that comes up frequently is, well, why didn't they just connect the drive-through? Why didn't they just punch it right through? And the reason why is because while there's the bluff on the north side, this side, the east side central, there is another large hill, and with a number of significant trees. So by doing this type of layout, they're able to minimize disruption to the site, is the, what they've indicated to us is their goal. The grading plan then, the grading plan will be split into two pieces. One will be what's the developer's responsibility, and then the second will be what is the builder's responsibility. The reason why they're taking this approach is that they're setting this up to be a custom graded, custom-designed development. Each home will be designed to fit specifically on the lot with each lot's particular challenges. So the grading plan then for the developer shows that they will be installing the two cul-de-sacs and then preparing for the stormwater management or the infiltration basin area. The red is depicting the grading limits. And then the builder will be responsible for grading each of the individual pads for developing then the sites. The utility plan is pretty straightforward, pretty similar to what the planning commission has seen in the past for the property. Water would be taken from Diamond Path, showing links for that. One change, though, is that sanitary sewer runs on the west side of the property in the rear yard, so sanitary sewer will be accessed in the backyard, so that is being looked at. And then stormwater, storm will need to be directed to this infiltration area. Tree preservation plan. The tree preservation plan identifies 7,000 caliper inches of significant trees on the site. The proposal would be to remove 2,874, or 41% of the significant trees. By doing the single-family development, they are able to, they are able to protect or save or not disturb a number of trees in comparison to the previous plans that were reviewed. The developer will be required to replace 10% of the caliper inches removed, and that will be 115 two-and-a-half inch trees will meet that requirement. So this is a view, kind of a depiction of the site, and the handout that you have in front of you is professional. This is more kind of interpretive, again, showing the knoll, the existing home, or I'm sorry, the bluff, the bluff in the existing home, undisturbed, and then the large knoll, undisturbed, the buffer area maintained, and then the areas that are disturbed will be the locations for the new tree plantings to meet those requirements. And this then is the depiction or the rendering that they've provided. So kind of the, some of the outstanding issues that we're still working with the developer to resolve. Again, the proposal is designed to meet the minimum requirements of R1 and Shoreland zoning districts. Dakota County will limit the number of driveways to two, so there's a need to resolve kind of how the lots will get access to Diamond Path. The city variance consideration, the shared private driveways, I've explained. A distinction needed between private streets and private driveways, and this is a little bit of a sticking point that we're dealing with. Right now, the developer is showing the large cul-de-sac, the access into the site as simply driveway, pavement, no curb, no gutter, and with stormwater sheet draining off of the cul-de-sacs. And what the city will be looking at is whether this would meet the definition of a private street, and if so, it should meet the design requirements for a private street, and then the private drives would be typical private residential drives, no curb, so on and so forth. So that's something that we're working at, looking at. Fire truck access to the parcel have, the design of the cul-de-sacs have met the requirements. Now, the next thing we need is going to be truck turn diagrams to confirm that the fire trucks can make the turns that are designed. Natural features of the site, again, the bluff, the knoll, heavily wooded, there are certainly challenges related to the property. And then custom graded. One of the things the city is concerned about is just making sure that there's a cohesive kind of preliminary plan set up, so that as the developer, as the builder comes in, they've got kind of a framework for making sure each lot works together. So with that, Mr. Chair, staff is recommending tonight, opening the public hearing, receiving comments, and closing the public hearing. It is the policy of the planning commission to not take action on an item on the night of its public hearing. And with that, I could stand for questions.
Kathy, and I'm assuming that the current driveway that's shown on the map is being vacated then?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Well, I think you've done a very good job of working with the developer on this so far, so thanks. Any comments, questions?
Sure, I'll just make a comment, Kathy. Thank you, Chair. Tim. Is, I too agree, a huge improvement, and I think it, I hopefully the residents around the lake will appreciate it, you know, too, more so than before. But the cul-de-sac, I think, was a great idea by preserving more natural resources and the trees and everything like that, so just like to commend that it was a nice job.
Mr. Chair, Scanlon?
Mr. Chair, Kathy, what is the difference with the cul-de-sacs between what's being proposed and if it was designated a private street?
The street width would have to increase a little bit for just the access street. The cul-de-sac itself, the design would stay the same, but it would be adding curb and gutter, so there would need to be some work done to deal with stormwater management.
Right, which is been a concern all along with this project.
Yes.
Additionally, with this kind of two-step, the developer and then the builder, how is there, what would be the plan as far as maintaining the protections of the wetland areas, so there's that consistently, consistency taking place that, you know, it's one thing the developer comes in and we're, they're sitting here tonight going through this, but it's another thing with the builder, and as far as that getting passed along and those standards being maintained not to damage that area?
Sure, sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Scanlon, the, so there may be a, the developer says he may set up a homeowners association, but it would be a loose affiliation just to deal with the maintenance of the streets. Otherwise, it'll be the responsibility of each individual homeowner to maintain the infiltration area and the wetlands, and the buffers, abutting that. So basically, what will happen is agreements will be executed with the developer that need to be filed against the properties, putting future buyers on notice that this needs to be maintained and into perpetuity.
Isn't there going to be a level of difficulty if there isn't some structure there as far as one homeowner taking care of things and another homeowner not taking care of things as far as like the rain garden areas and so forth, that... It seems like there needs to be some structured association that's going to have a consistent means of maintaining that and not just the homeowner doing that.
Sure. So a couple of thoughts along those lines. I promised Sam that I wouldn't put her on the spot, but the buffer areas are going to have to have signage, so that's one thing that'll put people on notice. There will be actual posted signs that say, "This is buffer, do not disturb." The other thing, though, is that the buffer areas will be under easement executed with these owners, so they will be compelled, it will be a requirement that they be maintained. If a neighbor notices the other neighbor has cleared out or done something, the city, we would need to go back and look at our agreements and...
And then last and finally, is there some, I know in your report you talked about sidewalks in the future when Diamond Path is redone, but it seems like there should be some interconnection with these homes, that they're just not isolated on their own, which is kind of keeping with what we do here in Apple Valley, that there's some means of pathways or walkway to interconnect at Lakeview City.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Scanlon, the challenge with that is that any more pavement increases impervious surface area, and as I mentioned in the staff report, didn't point out in my presentation, some of the lots will have challenges with keeping under the requirement. That's not to say that a footpath or something couldn't be explored.
Kind of what I'm looking at.
Yeah, yeah. I know there are paths out there today, so that's something we could certainly talk to the developer about.
Yeah, and it's, you know, we've looked at multiple options for this, and this has been the best thing that we've seen so far, so thanks for all your research and the developer and...
So just to follow up on that, one more point, and that is, different from other kinds of developments where there may be common property or community property, this will all be individually owned parcels. So if there's a footpath going across, it's going to go across somebody's private property. So that's a little bit of the challenge, but we can certainly talk to the developer and see what kind of options there are.
Thanks, Kathy.
Sure.
But they, but they could access it by going through, by walking the private drive to get out to Diamond Path, right? I mean, we're only talking, walking three houses to get to the walking path, so...
True, true. So a person could walk down the, up the street and then out to the Diamond Path pathway and then make a connection that way without crossing private property.
And they wouldn't even get their 10,000 steps in by that point. Okay, any other questions for Kathy? No, thank you. Any comments from the petitioner?
It's all right, did you hear me? All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Marcus Onstergaard, I'm with GMH Land Development. It has been quite the process working on this piece of property, and I appreciate your patience with us as we work towards a really nice development. Kathy did a great job explaining the process. I'm just going to recap a couple of things. When we started over with this project, the first thing we did is we laid out the R1 zoning to see what that would look like. We got close to this layout. Second thing we did is we met with the, or Kathy helped us meet up with the county again, and we had access was going to be a big part. And then this is kind of where that landed with the county planning commission. Next, we met with staff, mainly engineering, and we worked through water service, and we worked through sanitary service, and this is the result of those meetings. And then third, actually Kathy and some other staff members, we walked this property, and we talked about pad placement, the private street or private drive placement, we talked about the shoreline, we talked about the sanitary sewer line that runs along the lake, and then we talked about this idea of how to manage the stormwater. And the linear rain garden, see, when you're out there watching the site, the water just naturally flows towards the lake. So we want to use what's there and not regrade the whole thing. So the way we laid out the rain gardens, and we kind of kept it a little loose in our plans, because a lot of the work, things may change out in the field, but the goal would be to create the volume areas that we needed to treat the water and also be on-site and catch all the water. So as we grade through, that's kind of why we have that two-phase grading plan. So that's basically the engineering parts. I also spent numerous hours out here walking around where would be the best place to put the private drives and where would be the best place to put the homes, and walking around with a GPS and a tree survey and, okay, this oak, let's figure out a way to save it, and then we were or we weren't. But a lot of, a lot of the little stuff in there, it has to do with saving a few trees here and there. So we did spend a lot of time. And then early on, that center knoll, that's quite a bit grade change, and it's a nice separation between the homes and Diamond Path in the future for a buffer both ways, too, from the lake going that way, then also for these homes. So it made sense to save that knoll, and then that's kind of where the two private drives were developed. Also, from lot three to four, there's quite a bit of grade change, there's like 20 feet of grade change between those two homes. So it also solved the problem of trying to get up, so keeping them separate worked really nice. So that's kind of the evolution, and that took us five, six months as we worked through it. Another thing I wanted to tell you or just confirm, we have one builder that's working on this site, so we'll be working with just one builder. So the questions of how are things going to be handed off, I'm going to be with that builder all the way through and working with him on his surveys and stuff like that. That builder will initially buy the existing home and remodel that and sell it, and then that builder, that will buy each one of these homes and build it. So we're only working with one builder. And I, and that builder is Custom One Homes out of Woodbury. They build approximately 30 homes a year, so it's not a huge builder, but they do quite a few. About half of those homes are their single-family homes, and they start at about $1 million, million-plus, so they're a higher-end builder. And they're usually on the Artesian tour in the, in the fall, so if you know of that, their models are usually part of that thing. And also, this year, Housing First Minnesota, they won the Regi Award, which is the best home at the $2 million-plus price. So, I mean, they've got a lot of awards in their, in their history. And then also, I spoke with the builder, and he will be putting together an HOA for this neighborhood. He thought, we talked about covenants and things like that, but he thought it'd be easier just to put together an HOA, manage the shared driveways, and then manage whatever type of management needs to be done with those rain gardens. And then as Kathy mentioned, the buffering and things like that, that's going to be, you know, the HOA will mention those things, but again, that'll be the requirement every homeowner would just have to meet the requirements the city has for along the lake. One other thing, just work backwards, also, we did, when we did our site planning, we did, again, that impact zone for the DNR off the lake. We did, you know, draw that line pretty early, and we've left that area alone. The only place we're going to be encroaching on that is a couple stormpipes for discharge. So all our rain gardens, everything is away from the DNR impact zone area, so we're not touching those areas. So, and I'm here for any questions that you may have. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Very thorough. Any comments? I don't think so, it was a very good presentation. Any, anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
My name's Rick Bruno, I live at 13271 Diamond Path, three dollars down from this. And, you know, first thing I'll say, this is a way better proposal than the 18 houses by far, and I thank you for turning that down. But I have two questions on this. You know, all these houses are going to want a beach and a dock access down on the lake. You know, are they going to be able to do that with, and still keep the DNR zone the way it's supposed to be? I'm not sure how all that works and that. And number two, I was talking with the county people when they were out there surveying, and they were telling me that, well, this year they have several hundred thousand dollars to study the Diamond Path corridor from Pilot Knob to 140th Street, and they are going to upgrade the road in the future. So they're telling me that they're going to want 40 feet of my property. And on this proposal, I see he was talking 10 feet, so I kind of wonder if the Diamond Path expansion, it's going to happen, it's not official yet, of course, but, you know, are the Diamond Path expansion going to need more of this property? And before this is over... And before this is okay, maybe somebody might ask the county that question. I don't know if it's been asked to them or not. But them are about the only two things that I have concerns with.
Those are good questions, and we'll ask Kathy to look into those before the next meeting. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Have a great day.
I'm Bill Sherry. I live at 4855 Dimonica Way. I'm on the opposite side of the lake from this proposal. I've been there 28 years. I am the president of the Farquhar Lake Association, but I don't appear in that representative capacity tonight. We haven't met and discussed this, so I can't really speak on behalf of the group. I want to be clear that I'm here with my own opinions tonight, my own public comment. But I'm pretty sure, from what I know of living there that long and knowing everybody, that there's a lot of people that will just generally agree with me. The first thing I want to say is to echo Rick's comments to all of you here on the commission, that we are so grateful that the rezoning request was denied for that other development with 17 villa homes and stuff. I don't know how to say it any more profoundly. I don't think in your line of work you hear gratitude all that much, but here it is loudly, clearly, and expressly. This is so much better than that other thing, that it's hard to object to this. And frankly, I'll be clear, I don't object to it because even though, you know, it seems dramatic and significant, and it'll be a massive change and so on, the reality is that if it meets the zoning requirements and somebody owns the land and wants to do it, I realize there isn't any means or basis or reason to stand here and say we still object. So, I want to be clear, I don't object. But I do have worries, and it surprises myself because I don't think I'm a worrier. I like to just figure out what you need to do and go do it. Stop worrying about it. That's all kind of useless. But as I go through this and look at this, I worry about some things that I just want to put into words because I think this is going to be kind of a long-term thing. I met with Mark Sonstegard, as did some of my other neighbors. There was a public meeting on December 20th at the Apple Valley Community Center. It was great to be able to sit and talk with him and have him show us, show me. I asked him a load of questions, and I was impressed with the way this current proposal has been done because Mr. Sonstegard explained to me things like that knoll on the east side in the center there, the elevation changes and a small retaining wall, and because of these trees, they decided to keep it like that and not connect the road, and how the water lines run on the driveway paths, and, you know, all these are the things that they've really, truly, earnestly, deliberately tried to preserve that site and make the houses fit rather than the other way around, which is bulldoze the snot out of it and then put houses in and then plant some trees, too. So, I commend that effort. I'm grateful to see it. I came away from that meeting thinking, somebody put some serious work into this, and it's impressive. So, for those reasons, I'm optimistic about how this is going to work. The other thing I understood from him, I'm glad to be corrected if I'm wrong, but as this progresses, the intended plan is for the developer, or the builder, to first remodel the existing home. I still call it John Houston's place. It's the 13303 house, the house that exists there now. Remodel that, and then what Mr. Sonstegard told me was the other lots in their business arrangement and agreement essentially amounts to selling them an additional lot every 90 days or so. I don't even care about that, those logistics, but what I understood from that is that the building will evolve rather than being one big wholesale thing where the whole works gets cleared at once. You know, it'll be remodel the existing house, then work on the house that goes on to Lot Number 2. 90 days later, the builder buys Lot 3, and I don't know when they start building, but it moves slowly. I think that's a really big thing. That mattered to me because I can imagine then that there's less exposed grading and, you know, trees missing and bulldozing going on in the event that there was some big drastic weather event. There's less exposed land if it gets developed that way. So, I'm just here to say publicly that that's what I've heard. I think it's a good thing. I pointed out to you in the hopes that people pay attention to that and maybe expect that or ask about that or require that along the way because it seems like a better way to approach all of that. The other thing Mr. Sonstegard told me that I think is important, and I haven't heard it said here yet tonight, but I would like to make it public, is that I understand that the developer does some of the initial site prep, and then when the builder is putting on individual homes, the specific grading for each of those lots occurs later. But in the initial prep, before too much else gets done, down closer to the water where that linear rain garden exists to catch stormwater, that gets done first, gets done early, so that when people move up the hill and start moving more dirt and doing more things, down there where it matters, where there's a place to catch sediment and erosion and runoff and stormwater treatment and all that, that structurally gets created first. I'm here to say, good idea. Let's make sure it gets done. So, for all of those people involved in the, you know, the long-term process of monitoring and paying attention to that, I'm just putting it into words because I like that idea. I think it's important. I realize that in the way it gets presented to you tonight, all those details aren't supposed to get said here because this is a summary presentation, and the work is yet to be done, and everybody's still working on it. I get that. But I also think tonight's maybe a good time for me to remind folks of my kind of long tenure, living there 28 years. When I was fairly new there, I wish I knew the specific date or year, but I remember Al Hoff, whose house was just to the north or west here, around the Big Bluff, the place where Pat and Simone Kohler live now. I knew Al pretty well, and he had called me, and he was just furious and asked me to come over, and I went to his place, and it was, there was a big rainfall event when Huntington on the other side of Diamond Path, you know, across the road was all under development and all graded up and all, you know, the stormwater ponding was being created and stuff. There was a big rainfall event, and it washed across or under or somehow ended up washing out this massive gully in Al's yard. And I stood there with him and looked at it, and we talked about it, and we were trying to, in our own layman's way, appreciate and calculate how much sediment got washed into Farquhar Lake when that big gully got washed out when it rained so much. It was horrible, and it had a lot to do with the runoff and the erosion that was created from all of Huntington being graded bare as it had been. Okay, at the time, I didn't document it or hang on to it, and I've even gone looking for that information now, and I don't have it. I'm just talking about what I remember. But the idea here is that, and making it relevant to tonight, is that I also did a lot of sort of activism anyway. I was actively involved with the city a lot years ago when we were getting flooded all the time. My backyard was flooded kind of routinely, and it, you know, we had a lot of public meetings then. I was before the Planning Commission. I was before the City Council. I went to work sessions. I met with Public Works. I met with Natural Resources people. I was going to meetings a lot. And one of the things that came up was this sort of routine discussion about, well, you know, that rainfall event, the one that flooded you this time, was a 100-year stormwater event. And I remember sort of smarting off maybe at this podium one day where I said, well, then I must be about 500 years old because that's the fifth time I've seen it happen. And the point I was trying to make is we've got to start talking about it like it's unforeseen. We, you know, we couldn't see it coming, or it was a 100-year abnormality or anomaly. We all know now, when every time, not every time, when you turn on the news, it's pretty common for there to be something in your media stream about climate change and extreme weather events and, you know, this year's records and how everything's changing. What I'm here to say tonight publicly is, let's all recognize that, well, this is getting graded and developed. It's entirely predictable that we're going to get a massive rainfall event or something which will create a disaster. Let's hope not, but as I said to you folks in November when the Shoreland overlay proposal was being revised, and I came here and spoke briefly about how a lot of times, in my experience, I don't want to offend anybody here, but I'm being straight about it, a lot of times what I see is an analysis and a calculation and somebody's determination that the minimum requirement is X, and this meets the minimum. End of discussion. You know, the tree mitigation plan requires this many trees to be put back, just 10%. Well, okay, is 10% the right number? Well, it's the minimum. Oh, well, the amount of impervious surfaces, it can't be more than this, and this is one click inside the boundary, so we have to approve it. Do we? What about changing the cul-de-sac to impervious surface or something? You know, I mean, the idea being that I question, or I just, I guess I throw it out there as a motivational challenge, is are the minimums always the right way to measure what we do? What about when it's a steep hillside on a natural lake environment where we all know it's a protected water and impaired water, and there are all kinds of zoning regulations in Apple Valley about how we have to do everything we can to preserve the natural environment? Those minimums would be the same exact regulations that would apply if this was flat. What about when it's steep? Does that require more? I think it might, but I'm not the one here to speak as a layman about what I think should be different here. I'm sort of throwing it out there as food for thought and a challenge to people as we try to do this right. I've come to meetings here where I've watched part of the rest of the agenda and seen you folks discuss the landscape plan for some commercial building that's going in and whether there's enough trees to screen the people in the drive-through from the other people that live across the street. Well, there's no minimum about that, no, you know, defined regulatory requirement. You're just doing what seems like the right thing for that piece of property, or you ask them what kind of siding they're putting on the back of the building because you think it would look goofy if they don't do it this way or that way. I recognize that when you make those decisions, it isn't because somebody's got a minimum about what the siding is supposed to have on it. What you're doing is trying to figure out what's the right way to do it for this place, that business, with these people across the street, in this world, with this kind of traffic flow. You know, you're just feeling the right way to do it. That's part of what I think you do in your line of work. And what I'm suggesting here is that I challenge people to say, rather than the measuring stick being, what's the minimum? I'd rather have the measuring stick being, what's the right thing to do here? Of course, it has to be at least the minimum, or we aren't going to have the conversation, but beyond the minimum, let's take a look at this and maybe, you know, so far what you've been given in summary fashion isn't the right way to do it, and maybe the way you approached that, as you did, Commissioner Scanlon, where you're asking questions about, how's this going to work? Are they doing, going to do it the right way? I love that kind of analysis, and I commend you for it, all of you folks. And especially here, remember, folks, this is a steep hillside on a lake where there's a lot that has to happen to make this work. I knew John Houston really well. I think I've told all you that before, and when I used to ask him, what are you going to do with this? Oh, he just would tell me that. It'd take too much to try to develop that and sell homes there. It's just not built for it. John was a land developer, you know? Well, here's somebody, the builders and their developer, and they're, you know, here on this third proposal, and it is taking a lot of work to get there. And it's because it's a complicated, complex, unique piece of property, both in the terrain and how it sits on the lake, and the fact that it's a county road, and all of those variables. So, it's challenging, and I frankly don't know who does all of those careful, detailed, complicated decision things. I know it isn't me, but in my opportunity to offer a public comment, I came to say those things tonight in the hope that as you do all that work, Kathy and everybody else who puts the microscope to these ideas and figures out what to recommend or suggests additional changes, I think I'd like to emphasize that part about how maybe we should require more than the minimum on some of this stuff. Maybe it would be better if we do. Mr. Sonstegard told me, when I expressed my concerns to him about erosion, and told him that story about when Al Hoff's place got eroded and this big gully way was, you know, cut out through his yard. You know, I got the response you would expect about, oh, we'll be careful, and we're going to double silt fence things, and, you know, we know what the requirements are, and we'll abide by them, and I get that. And I don't even know how to say it any better, but makes me wonder, like, has somebody really taken a look at how you do this when it's steep and it's right on the lake? Is there something more than ordinary normal and ordinary minimums that we ought to be doing here, more than just the grading plan? Or, you know, can we or should we require more than just 10% of the trees that are taken out be replaced? And even though a landscape plan isn't required, but the notes say one got submitted, is it a good one? Does it do the right thing? Is it just aesthetically appropriate, or does it actually have the practical effect you would want landscaping to do? And I know what I'm talking about is one of those things where I sound like it's somebody else's job to do all of that. You know, I'm not meaning to say I'd be unwilling. I just know it's not my role. I'm just a member of the public, and I don't have a position to be doing that stuff, but my hope is that the message keeps everybody thinking about it that way, and I respect and defer to the decisions you make. I'm trying to go fast because I hate to wear out my welcome by talking too much, but one thing I noticed, and I expect this is maybe just well-understood, but I saw the December 29 memo to Kathy Bodmer from civil engineer Jody Scheit, where she said in paragraph 10 that the existing septic system on that house has to be properly disconnected and then decommissioned in conjunction with the home demolition permit. Well, everybody said that that house remains and it gets remodeled, and there was something in the materials about how there would be a home demolition permit, and I just want to point it out that I don't think that's the plan is to demolish that house. I think the plan is to remodel it, and I just happened to have saw that in there and thought it was worth mentioning. So, I brought more notes than I should have tonight. I'm just going to take a quick look at whether I've covered the ground that I wanted to. And I think I'll also just, I'll close with this. Given my understanding that this is the concept, the big-picture plan where the developer starts this and then it goes in smaller steps as it gets handed off lot by lot to the builder, and there's individual grading plans and so on, I would expect that house by house, or at least in the future, there will be additional attention that all you folks pay to the same exact stuff that we're talking tonight? Or doesn't it come back individually? Commissioner Digman, you're saying no? Then I suppose it's up to the city. Maybe I'm talking to city staff about each one of the grading plans and stuff, but I know it wouldn't be appropriate for me or anyone like me to keep coming back time after time and saying over and over the things that I'm saying tonight, so I hope that my message endures and that as we do this, I mentioned at the beginning of my comments, I'm nervous about how all of this really gets effectuated, where, you know, these private stormwater infiltration basins that are critical and important, how do they get maintained long-term? And how does somebody really make sure that actually happens like it's supposed to? And I heard mentioned tonight about the builder has said now that they're going to do a HOA, and that'll get built into there, and maybe all that work will come. Maybe somebody's on top of that, and it'll all happen, but I'm worried, like, really? Does it? Because I am old enough to know that when regulations are in place, it doesn't mean everybody always follows them, you know? I'm remembering that immense load of sand that got dumped on this same property three years ago, way more than the, you know, beach requirements allow, but once it was already dumped and shoveled out, I didn't know what to do about it. I didn't know that there's anything you could do. It was already a done deal. And it's that kind of thing that I'm worried about, like, we've got a designated wetland, and we give it all the right lip service, and we talk about the DNR regulations, and we say we're going to put up signs and designate things. I hope that self-policing is enough, or I hope that it somehow runs itself like it's supposed to, but I think it's really important to do this carefully. I'm not standing here in objection to it, but I'm here to be... I'm not standing here in objection to it, but I'm here to be emphatic that I hope that it's done carefully so that none of this project results in people having meetings about what an environmental disaster occurred in the process. If it could be done well, done safely, done carefully, then it's progress and I don't have to like it, but I know it's going to happen. So I trust I'll get to know everybody who lives there because they all contact me anyway to ask me, how does this lake association thing work? I've had that conversation with everybody who lives on the lake time to time because as soon as they start asking questions, the answer is call Bill Sherry. So I do it over and over with them and I get to know everybody. So again, grateful to all of you folks for having gotten it to here instead of where it was. Thanks for hearing me out. I appreciate the work you do.
Thanks, Bill. So it looks like you'll have an opportunity to talk to the owners as part of the association, so that'll be good.
Right.
Yep, thanks. Any other comments from the public?
I live at 12949 Diamond Path on the north side of the lake and I'd like to thank everybody too for rejecting the last plan. This is a whole lot better. As far as the, Mr. Sonsegard, when I met the same night Bill did with him explaining this idea of rolling these out one at a time, is that part of the deal? Is that somebody going to regulate that or is that just what their plan is? Can anybody answer that?
I believe that's just what their plan is and that's the builder and the developer.
Because I have the same concerns that Bill was explaining about whether the, you know, it's not, I don't think they're going to clear-cut it, but if there were five of these things going up at one time, just the difference in the impact and all the problems with, you know, the runoff and everything. So that isn't, that's not part of the approval, is that they do it that way?
Not currently. And we haven't seen the, we haven't seen the list of conditions from the city yet, so we don't have a specific list of what we're going to approve. But from what I understand, from what the developer said, that that was the plan, that developers working with one builder and that's the method that one builder is going to use.
So that's their plan and it, but I guess I don't understand the other thing you said about, there still has to be a plan approved, is that right?
Correct.
And is it possible that the incremental development is part of that plan? And then that would be...
Might possibly be part of the wording of the final approval, yes.
And how does that get decided?
Mr. Chair, we could put this down as an issue and bring it back, do some research and bring that back at the next meeting.
Okay, thanks. I just, it's just a concern.
That was a fair question.
Yeah. And then also the other thing I have to say is the buffer that Mr. Sonsegard explained to me that night, that's, that's part of the plan too. That's, that's something that's not a part of a plan that, that's what we want, we'd like to do and that's what we're telling everybody, that's part of the approval process.
Kathy?
Mr. Chair, I don't want to do a dialogue, but I'll, I can say that the developer is required to provide stormwater treatment and management before it goes into the lake. So yes, it's a requirement.
The rain garden and the tree barrier?
Separate, separate requirements, but yes, they're required.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here before I ask, does organizer have anybody online virtually that would like to make comments?
Mr. Chair, we have no one who would like to speak.
At this point, if no further comments, I will close the public hearing. Policy of the Planning Commission not to act on an item on the same night as a public hearing. The Planning Commission weigh all comments that have been received tonight. Those comments will, and information received tonight will be deliberated at a future meeting. These will continue to appear on a future Planning Commission agenda until a recommendation on the petition can be forwarded to City Council. Thank you. Next item of business is item 4B. And I will now open the public hearing for agenda item 4B. The affidavit for publication of notice of the public hearing is available for inspection in the planning department. Everyone wishing to speak at this public hearing should be sure to fill out the attendance roster and if virtually register with the meeting organizer, include names and addresses so that accurate records can be maintained. We'll begin the procedure with a brief presentation by city staff, followed by a presentation by the petitioner of the hearing. Upon the conclusion of the presentation, city staff will be asked to comment on the proposal's conformance with pertinent regulations and policies and after that, comments will be taken from the general public. Alex?
Just a moment here. Good evening, Chair, members of Planning Commission. As noted, this is a public hearing for a U-Haul plan development rezoning and text amendment and a conditional use permit amendment. There are four different actions that the committee is being asked to consider this evening. One is a recommendation to amend to allow self-storage facilities within zone two of PD 254. The second is to increase the maximum building allotment, allow coverage, I apologize, from 30 to 40%. The third is to amend a conditional use permit for exterior storage at, for U-Haul Apple Valley and it's superseding the resolution from 1999 that previously allowed this and then the site plan building permit authorization. We have, oh, actually, I would like to go back briefly. We have previously held a public hearing on this item on November 3rd. We reissued the public notice for the rezoning and actually that one appeared to be in cut off on your fifth action, so my apologies for that. But the Planning Commission held this public hearing for the conditional use permit and the plan development amendments. There were some concerns noted at that public hearing by the commission and I will go over those in a further slide. Just to remind people of the location is, it is at the northeast corner of Galaxy Avenue and 151st Street. It's the existing site of U-Haul Apple Valley. They've been in operation since 1999. The public hearing concerns I'll go over briefly here that were expressed by the Planning Commission were a total building height as that, as the proposal did seek to increase above what the plan development allowed at 35 feet. By rezoning to PD 254 Zone 2, an existing zone but not utilized by any of the parcels within PD 254, it actually already allowed the 40-foot height requirement. So the zone had been created a long time in the past, but no property had been actually zoned. Your staff report goes into some further details on that. Upon finding that zone within the zoning code, staff worked with the applicant, re-noticed for the public hearings so that we could apply, so that they could apply for a rezoning of the property rather than amending PD 254 Zone 1, which had the 35-foot requirement. What this further does is it allows that other parcels in the future coming forward for that height amendment would need to rezone their property in accordance with Zone 2, thus addressing some of the Planning Commission's concerns about setting up a very tall structures next to some of the residential or changing the overall character of the plan development. The second item that came up during the plan, or during the public hearing was building lot coverage. This was primarily brought up by staff and it was noted at that public hearing, the commission seemed appreciative of the fact that this does actually improve the stormwater retention on the site by an underground infiltration area or storage area, which is better than the existing conditions. And to address the impact of the additional building coverage on the site, this is likely a decrease in the traffic to the site as there will no longer be any exterior storage for customer vehicles, thus bringing less customers to site. If you remember from the prior public hearing, the U-Box does not have public pickup at their site. They may be able to come in and order a U-Box at the site, but they would not be able to access their unit from the site. That's not how their product is organized. The facade improvements were another item that Planning Commission brought up. The facades that I will show you towards the end of the presentation show a lot of thought has gone into it. A lot of the vertical plane massing has been broken up through different textures, different materials and some additional glass. I would also note at that public hearing, there were no concerns noted from the public. So the site plan has not changed significantly. However, I did want to point out a specific area. Originally, staff, when staff is reviewing this, we thought that that a loading area was a portion of the building. Upon review, we found that it had no foundation and therefore was able to question the applicant and it was not part of the building. So what they've done is added a screening wall and then a screening fence because on the southern side, if you recall, there was significant utilities. Because of that, the foundation size of the wall would not be permitted. So they did that along the western side where it would be, it matches the brick of the proposed building. The demolition plan has not changed since the first review. It does remove significant other number of trees on the western side. However, all of these were within drainage utility easement, which is not permitted and therefore they wouldn't be permitted to be placed back in the same locations. Interior building plan has not actually altered at all either. You can see that area that I was speaking about with the foundations to the south there where it looked like it was a portion of the building and then does, actually did not, was just used as a loading and unloading zone. Still working through some of the utility pieces with that bathroom in the southwest corner. However, those are items that can be sorted out as the building permit proceeds rather than Planning Commission item. Stormwater on the site, as noted, has been an improvement with the underground infiltration, which any other redeveloping site within the zone would be required to do as well as new requirements have been put in place since the 1999 approvals. Landscape plan focuses on screening along the north side with that fencing along the south side to screen the loading and unloading area. Screening along the southern side is relatively limited due to the large amount of easements going through that southern corridor. The north side and the west side are very well screened and you'll see that in a rendering coming up as well. You've seen this graphic before, so I'm not going to linger on it, but the building coverage piece specifically with the site to the east that shows the 32% actually jumps up to more than 51% if you go with the lot line, which happens to lie in the centers of County Road 42 rather than at the property line where it's shown with the red line, which would be more standard. So as sites redevelop within this, within Plan Development 254, they would still be required to meet the 40, or the 35% building coverage required of Zone 1 unless they were to rezone to Zone 2. Some of the increases, and you'll see a before and after coming up as well, but wanted to emphasize some of the changes that have been done. Additional brick has been added. The total height of a parapet has been reduced slightly while adding that architectural flare. Some additional glass has been added and you'll start seeing that the panelized system actually includes some vertical massing changes. Staff brought up that the material itself was an item of concern. The applicant did provide a material sample for us. Upon review, I can say it's very durable. It doesn't, it looks pretty attractive. It is available for the Planning Commission to review as well if you'd like. I was wanting to take a look at it to see how site operations would work and from, from my experience, EFS, once damaged, is very difficult to repair. This material would be very difficult to manage, so it's very good for a site like this. I've seen the material in the real world as well. It is a more industrial look. That being said, this is a quasi-industrial zone with the brick facade in the lower half. This is a north elevation going westbound on County Road 42. You start to see that additional glass and the coloration and texture changes to the buildings that have, or to the building that has been added. What this does is help break up the vertical plane and break up the massing of that structure so that you start seeing some more visual impact rather than just a blank wall. The west wall was fairly plain and with those trees being removed, staff had expressed concern as well as the Planning Commission. Additional brick has been added and as I noted, some of the texture changes and panelized system to offer some differentiation as you view the wall as it proceeds. Here's where you can see the garage area that will be screened. There will be a rendering coming up that will show that screening as well, but wanted to show the southern elevation without the screening. Shows similar elevation changes and the architectural element on that western side. Also shows the canopy between the two semi-independent structures that was required by the city to allow them to be viewed as a single structure without a site. This is the southern rendering showing the brick wall and some of the massing changes along that western wall as that will be a lot more prominent now. With the screening wall and the massing changes along that wall, staff does view this as a pretty good improvement upon what was originally reviewed. The east elevation is the interior of the site and consistent with the 1999 resolution, staff did not require as many of the wall amendments or wall changes. When you're viewing interior to a site that would not be able to be viewed off-site, the four-sided architecture provision of code has been consistent with allowing some changes but still requiring some of the brick that you see on this lower side of the building. The action requested this evening, though it is not the policy of the Planning Commission to act on the night of a public hearing, would be to act on all of the items. I would defer to referring to the packet that has all five of the actions. When I expanded down, I believe it was removed, so my apologies on that. The order that they would certainly be in would be a rezoning of the property first from PD 254 Zone 1 to PD 254 Zone 2. There are any questions? It is a public hearing, so I believe that the applicant is present as well.
First, Commissioner Deakman?
Mr. Chair, Alex, on the east elevation, the parapet, the top parapet wall had a orange band here. None of the other elevations show the orange band, which is consistent with the current building. Will there be, will there be an orange band at the top to match the other building?
Chair, Commissioner Deakman, I believe that that is there. I think it got, it was on a set of plans previously and while we were working on the screening for that southern side, it was dropped. It's something that I was going to speak with the applicant about to stay consistent with the overall plans. It's a minor item, but we can certainly add a condition to it as well.
Okay. I only find four items on my packet.
I apologize.
Item four has 17 conditions.
Yeah, that's the site plan building permit authorization.
Yep. Is that where we should be adding the banding?
Yes, that would be an appropriate location for the banding.
Any other comments or questions for Alex? Commissioner Kurtz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Alex, I'm just going to back up what Commissioner Deakman said because I noticed the orange too. And I mean, to me, that's the highlight of the U-Haul. It kind of signifies when you're driving by, oh, there's U-Haul and stuff like that. So I'm glad he pointed that out too. Nice improvement, so, thank you.
So the question is, through what we have, is complete or what do you mention about number five? What?
So Chair, Commissioner Deakman, I believe Commissioner Deakman sought to add a condition about the orange banding and then the first action that the Planning Commission would take this evening would be to recommend approval of a rezoning from PD 254 Zone 1 to PD 254 Zone 2.
So we don't have a fifth of anything?
Yes, I'm not sure if that got dropped in the second printing or where that got dropped. I am embarrassed, I apologize.
So we're not missing something because...
No.
Okay, okay.
Apparently I am.
You're missing it, but it's not missed.
Since this is a public hearing, are there any comments from the public? Virtual organizer, are there any, anybody online standing by to comment?
Mr. Chair, we have no one who would like to speak.
Okay. So it's typically the practice to close a public hearing and not act on an item. So I'm going to close the public hearing and while it's typically that we do not act on an item the same night, given the fact that there are no outstanding comments or questions from the public or from the staff, I think we're going to be open to consider this item this evening.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Deekman.
I will take a crack at this. I move we recommend to rezone Lot 1, Block 1, U-Haul, Apple Valley addition from PD 254 Zone 1 to PD 254 Zone 2 per the draft ordinance amendment.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Deekman, seconded by Commissioner Scanlon. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move we recommend amend Plan Development 254 Zone 2 to allow for self-storage facilities and increase the total building coverage from 30% to 40% per the draft ordinance amendment.
Second.
Have been moved by Commissioner Deekman, seconded by Commissioner Kurtz. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move we recommend amending Resolution Number 1999-248, approving a conditional use permit for exterior storage for U-Haul Apple Valley, subject to the following conditions, 1 through 9, as outlined in the staff report.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Deekman, seconded by Commissioner Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move we recommend approval of a site plan building permit authorization for a 12,230 square foot structure addition, subject to the following conditions, 1 through 17, as outlined in the staff report, and the addition of number 18, which is top banding to match the color of the existing structure.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Deekman, seconded by Commissioner Kurtz. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. This will go on to the City Council, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Item 4C. We will now open the public hearing for Agenda Item 4C. Affidavit for publication of the notice of public hearing available for inspection in the Planning Department. Everyone wishing to speak at this public hearing should be sure to fill out the attendance roster or virtually register with the meeting organizer, including names and addresses where accurate records can be contained. Begin the procedure with a brief presentation by the city staff, followed by a presentation by the petitioner of the hearing. Upon the conclusion of the presentation, city staff will be asked to comment on the proposal's conformance with pertinent regulations and policies. After that, we'll take any comments from the general public. Alex?
Thank you, Chair members of the Planning Commission. As stated this evening, the action before you is to amend PD 290 to reduce the setback along all other streets from 30 feet to 20 feet. The petitioner is Cowboy Jacks and the property owner, Ken Sherman. They are attending digitally tonight, is my belief. The site is located at the northeast corner of County Road 42 and Cedar Avenue. It was built in around the early 1990 period. When it was done so, and the reason why I'm going to linger on this photo for a moment, American Inn was placed slightly too close, as was Cowboy Jacks, to Glacier Avenue. At that time, American Inn was granted a variance after the building was constructed to be allowed to be 15 feet from Glacier Avenue. Since that time, the city attorney has opined that variances within planned developments are not permitted, which is why the planning commission is reviewing a actual plan development amendment, not a variance. The property owner would like to add a 328 square foot addition to the eastern side of the structure. A 328 square foot addition would not require a site plan building permit authorization. It is too small of an addition to require that. The city has routinely allowed property owners to improve their facades, make small additions to their properties. This is no different than that, and therefore, the only piece that was required in order for this project to proceed was the amendment to Plan Development 290. I'm gonna blow up on this in just a moment, but as an overall site view, you can see just how close the existing building is to Glacier Avenue, which is only at 24.5 feet, I'm sorry, 24.6 feet away. The proposed addition would be at 19.68 feet away. The proposed addition is set to be a smokehouse area where a wood fire cooking would occur, as well as some pickup for the new trend of people being able to order at restaurants online. Right now, Cowboy Jacks does not have the ability for anyone to pick up without entering the restaurant. One of the things that they are looking at trying to do is add a pickup window on the southern side of this, adjacent to the site. You can see some of the parking on that southern side as well, just as you enter. That may actually reduce some of the overall parking demands within the site, as people will be able to come in for pickup and immediately go. This is in a direct result to COVID that they got the idea and why they're wanting to add this. We have seen many requests for things of this nature since 2020. The applicant has, in their letter to the planning commission, noted that they wish to do this in a train car style theme. The train car style theme relates specifically to the cowboy aspect of the building. However, I would not do it justice for the explanation. I would either defer to them, which they are attending digitally, or to their letter. These graphics show very well the intent, the size of the structure. The one piece that was added, or will be added, to the building permit, it is not a condition of the rezoning, as they are not related, is that any wood stacks that are shown on this would be required to be screened from the street. But I did want to note that to the planning commission. That would be a standard issue for a building permit condition. With that, there's not a lot to the project, but it did require a public hearing, so staff is requesting that we move the item along and the planning commission provide a recommendation on the night of a public hearing. If there are any questions, I would, I stand for questions.
Commissioner Deekman?
Alex, I noticed that the draft ordinance amendment is asking for 20 feet, but the drawing says 19 feet, .68.
That is a great catch, Chair Burt, Commissioner Deekman. Within the city ordinance, setbacks have a six-inch leeway zone. And rather than reduce to 19 feet, staff felt that it would be more applicable to go to the 20-foot setback. The 15-foot setback that American Inn is already at is relatively tight along Glacier Avenue. The 20-foot, when I was trying to study the entire plan development, felt like the better option than moving it to a 15-foot or a 19-foot.
Okay, sounds good. Now that we've gotten that established, what do we do with America Inn? If they're still at 15 feet and we're amending this ordinance to be 20 feet, they're still in, do they, is their variance still applicable?
I would need to defer to, yes. I believe that because we granted the variance, it is still applicable.
Okay.
The reason for sharing their variance is more of a contextual one.
Yeah, and I was just wondering if this somehow negatively impacts that, and we have to do something again with them, so, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Scanlon?
Mr. Chair, I was curious, Alex, is there any special venting requirements on something like this?
Chair Burt, Commissioner Scanlon, because they are doing cooking in there, they will require a Class 2 hood system. They are using the existing HVAC system, so they aren't needing to expand any of that out onto the ground or onto the rooftop, so you won't see those pieces. And there won't be vents going up through the roof. Wood fire cooking doesn't have any state requirements at this time, and this section of code would simply require a state-of-the-art filtration system, which generally classifies as the Class 2 hood system.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kurtz?
Thank you, Chair. Alex, I know this area pretty well, just because we attend chamber luncheons there quite a bit. And I know that that's a busy area right there when we come in that way, so I'm guessing that they pick up and stuff, they're gonna be coming on Glacier on that. Okay, so explain to me how you walk in. I know where the parking lot area is. How are they gonna change this parking lot? So that's gonna be that corner there. And if I remember correctly, there is a side parking, like a few spaces. So they're adding this on to where that area is where we usually walk into with the doors there, and to the left is the banquet room. So it's gonna be to the right of that?
Chair Kurt, or Chair Burt, Commissioner Kurtz, that is correct.
So where would the additional parking spot be? Are they not changing the parking spots whatsoever?
They're not changing the parking. These spots are being designated for some of the pickup parking upon speaking with the owner to allow for quick pickup.
Just wondering how busy it'll be, because I just see an issue in that area right there for busyness, because by the time they back out, another person's gonna be coming into the parking area.
Yep. One of the things we've worked with the property owner on is to try to reduce some of that business by having Glacier deliveries pull into the parking lot. We've seen where that hasn't occurred in the past, and so we've worked with them on that. The other alternative is, and this was actually speaking with the American owner, he preferred having them in this location so that they didn't impact the rest of the parking lot. Where people picking up, take up a lot of parking spots, is where his concern was. And if you're doing a quick pickup, you're in and out. And so as long as they were within these first stalls here, to the south of the building, and here to the east of the building, the property owner to the east was actually pleased with this, because he did not feel that it would impact his operations.
So there's no way possible that they could do an entry driveway to the north of that area? I know that the bank is right north of it, but no way possible, okay.
Chair Burt, Commissioner Kurtz, there's not enough room on a corner to add another entrance. That's why this was a combined entrance when it was originally constructed. There's a small driveway here for back-of-house operations that isn't utilized for customer for that very reason.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments? Any comments from the petitioner? I believe they're virtual.
Go ahead.
No.
State your name.
This is Ken Sherman, the owner. No comments.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, I'm going to, for the comments, I'm gonna close the public hearing. It's the policy of the planning commission typically not to act on an item in the same night, public hearing, but seeing as that there is no public comments, and this, at this point, is a simple motion to change a draft ordinance. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Mr. Chair, I move we recommend approval of the draft ordinance amending the building setback along all other streets from 30 feet to 20 feet.
In PD 290, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Deekman, seconded by Commissioner Sandel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
And Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add in the pursuit of economic development that we've been able to achieve the addition of railcar service in Apple Valley. And with that, we can move on.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is Item 5A, Apple Valley Industrial Office Development.
That didn't get updated. The requested action this evening is a site plan building permit authorization for 112,170 square foot speculative industrial building on Outlet A Carmella addition, which is west of Abdallah, at the northwest corner of 147th and Johnny Cake Ridge Road. An address has yet to be assigned. Conditions are included within the staff report. They are also amended on your... Bruce, I think the wrong presentation's open. This is the 1215 one.
It was the one in the folder.
I'll proceed with this one. The action has changed slightly, and so the actions requested are in front of you on the table. The actions were amended on number five and number four. A correction to 1.5%, as it is an industrial property, from 2.5%. And updated elevations, which unfortunately, I don't know that I'll be able to show, because they were in the other presentation.
Alex, the revised action item and the requests and the item, the multiple items there do speak of the changes on number four and number five.
Yes, I'm sorry, but the presentation may not show the photos, that's all. We'll see as it proceeds, but I believe that the... So the site grading is relatively flat with no trees at the current time. This is a site plan building permit authorization, does not require a public hearing. A final plat will be coming forward in the future. Additionally, a preliminary plat and site plan building permit authorization are brought forward at the same time. However, the site is preliminary-platted back with Abdallah. As such, the project just needs to apply for a site plan building permit authorization, and the final plat is reviewed by city council, not the planning commission. The final plat will have a number of impacts on the site, and so they have been looking at doing the final plat concurrently. Right now, the final plat is under review with Dakota County and staff internally to ensure that things move along at a similar pace. The site plan does have a couple of changes to it from the original submissions. One is in the highlighted area in the southeast corner as a proof of parking area. That area could potentially have parking stalls in it, depending upon the users. Staff has evaluated that based on the overall use of the site. Office use is typically a higher parking user than the industrial user, and so if parking is required, that area may become parking. Whether it will have access to the eastern access driveway will be determined at a later date. For context, Abdallah is to the east and has a shared access driveway with the site off of 147. An additional access off of 147 is on the western side of the site. These are the only two accesses permitted due to spacing guidelines, and they do align with other access points across 147. The overall grading of the site, as I noted, does go from east to west. Site, or staff did evaluate whether the building could be flipped at any time. Unfortunately, due to the grading of the site with the truck bays, it cannot be. There's too much of an elevation change between that western side and the eastern side to make that work, and it's the natural flow of where the water goes towards that existing ponding in the northeast corner. The utility plan is relatively basic. All the utilities essentially enter the site at one point and will have extensive vegetative screening. The truck bays noted are on the eastern side of the site. These will be screened through some vegetation that I'll show you on an upcoming landscaping plan. The landscaping will cover the utilities, so they've had to amend some of the species on top of that and potentially berm to allow for the spacing requirements. But in order to screen, they were amicable to do so. The landscape plan is relatively robust for screening on the southeast side to attempt to screen from 147th westbound. Screening was originally proposed within the area east of the site. However, as that is all within ponding area and ponding buffer areas, where landscaping is not permitted, that was removed. However, the applicant has been notified that some screening may further be required. Some changes may need to somewhat occur in the future that can be figured out as the site plan further develops, where if there is extensive areas of the truck screening that are visible, they would need to screen them in some other way. Additionally, the applicant's been notified that if semi-trailer vehicles are stored outside overnight or for a prolonged period of time, it is quite possible that a conditional use permit for exterior storage would be required. Common condition of that would be the screening of those trucks and vehicles. So it has been strongly considered in their site evaluation. When they come forward in the future, if they have a user that needs that type of use, it'll have to be further evaluated and further screened for that type of activity. The, I wanted to go back, my apologies. The, I wanted to go back, my apologies. The Natural Resources Coordinator did review the plans and had a couple suggestions on species. Those have been amended from the original memo. A secondary submission has already come in as we utilize some of the time from the last planning commission to this one to be able to get some further review. Those comments would pass along and can be addressed as part of the building permit or prior to city council review. One of the items that staff had requested was both the fire truck and semi-trailer turning radius drawings. What these were able to show is that both vehicles are able to traverse the site without any impact. One of the things that was questioned quite heavily was where the, or how this intersection right here would work with truck turning. What the diagrams you showed, it's a little tight, so there may be some minor amendments to that southeast corner in this location that may need to occur just to allow for some of the turning radius of the semi-trailers. As this is a speculative building, it is difficult to provide a complete interior plan of the site right now. What staff has done for parking evaluation is to view it as its highest use. While it may be possible that the parking, as I noted, is not utilized at that level, if they do utilize it to its full office extent, they may need to utilize some of the proof of parking area that was noted previously. One of the larger concerns that staff had had for the site, as there were some concerns with Abdallah, was the HVAC units and their screening from the property lines and public right-of-way. And so what the applicant has been able to provide here is a diagram of the height of an HVAC unit and where it would be seen from the property lines. And what these boxes denote is, this is a standard height for an HVAC unit where they wouldn't place any in the green. Anything with its curb and top that's taller than six feet would not be permitted within the blue zone. Anything taller than with its curb, and the unit would not, taller than eight feet would not be permitted within this darker purple zone. And then the standard HVAC equipment could handle anything up to 10 foot and higher within that center area. And the reason for that is that it's just such a large building. That being said, there is some parapet wall to it, and they will need to consider this when they bring users in in the future. If there's a requirement or a request for specific HVAC units for cooling, say, that would be within that green zone, they would need to find a way to screen, like Abdallah has, those specific units. This is another view of the HVAC visibility, and just shows the massing of the building using that as a way of screening from off-site, particularly along 147th, which will be the south, so your right side of this presentation, showing that there's a significant amount of building behind those zones. And I thought it was a good way of illustrating that the majority of the HVAC equipment would be pushed towards the center of the building and therefore not visible from public right-of-ways or property lines. Staff has worked pretty extensively with the applicant to improve some of the facade pieces. They've been great to work with on this. What we have been able to do is add some of the vertical plane and the banding that you see there for the different textures. The applicant originally proposed a painted orange material, but has been able to find a material that would be intricately colored, which is what code requires. They've got some photos of other building elevations that they've built previously with some major glass on the corners. Staff strongly encouraged that, so they've been able to add that. That's what your amended conditions are about. Originally, the condition had stated that additional glass be added, but they've worked with city staff to add that here, and so staff felt that was sufficient and amended that condition. This is an overall rendering of what the building would look like, kind of from the The south elevation would be along 147th, and what the public would mainly see, obviously this does not include some of the extensive vegetation you'd see on the right-hand side, and there are plantings along that southern building facade as well. Additionally, one of the things that was removed as part of this elevation was the number of truck bays. It's undetermined at this time whether that could come back. You can note that some of those are noted in Xs while some were just simply removed as part of the submission. Ultimately, a truck bay or two being added, let's say if that was needed in the future, would not change the overall facade or require further planning commission approval. The tenant, or the property owner is looking at setting this up as a potential for a three-tenant business, thus you're seeing kind of the breakup of the building into three separate sections. When you take these three separate sections with their entrances and their back, I've broken those apart so that you can kind of see what a individual tenant section would look like. These were some of the sample photos provided by the applicant showing those prominent corners and the additional glass. They did go with a more subtle color on the site. I would note that I believe the applicant noted these are painted, which again, our code would not permit it, or would not permit. So they found other materials that can work with that, but you can start seeing the different textures and the, specifically the horizontal banding to help break up some of that massing because it is such a vast building. With that, if there are no questions, staff is recommending, or if the planning commission concurs, staff is recommending a approval of 112, 112, 170 square foot speculative industrial building on Outlot A Carmella Edition.
Commissioner Deekman?
Mr. Chair, Alex, given the fact that this building does not front the street, is there, you know, a monument signage planned for the 147th street so people understand who is in that building? I know they'll have a signed permit, but I'm just kind of wondering, given the fact that the orientation of the building is not to the street?
Chair Burke, Commissioner Deekman, I would presume so. Signed plans are never reviewed as part of these. In fact, it's a standard condition, and I believe contained within these, that a signed plan is not approved as part of that, though something I would very much like to discuss with the applicant and will work with them on going forward.
Commissioner Scanlon?
Mr. Chair, Alex, to Mr. Deekman's question, I think with the buildings to the west, we allowed some signage, but it was limited to a number of companies that could be referenced on it, if I remember correctly, when we did that project.
Chair Burke, Commissioner Scanlon, that is correct. There are some monument signs. They would have to meet the overall size requirement. By doing a common signage plan, they can get an increase, and so that would likely be an avenue that we would encourage them to pursue because the tenant base, or all of the tenants may not be able to be listed on that southern building face. So it's likely we would need to work through that as part of the sign permit operation or review.
Then my only other comment would be is that, you know, the work that went into landscaping requirements, both to the west and east, that there's a balance takes place there with the structure also, and it seems like you're kind of on top of that already, and especially on that north side, because I know, I think we required screening on the western buildings that were done, so.
Yes, one major piece that I neglected to mention is there is a 25-foot trail easement for Dakota County along the western side of the site that is being dedicated as part of this for the Dakota County Greenway Trail. And so that is where you're seeing some limited screening along that side, as that will all be torn up when that trail comes through.
Right.
So that area is being provided to Dakota County, and then what you're seeing is a lot of the screening of the building and the parking lot on that western side.
Yeah, I know, like when we did the buildings to the west, we ended up requiring some additional screening for the trailer area.
Oh, for the exterior storage, yes.
Yeah, so that we're being consistent on with things, so.
Chair Burke, Commissioner Scanlon, yes, that was a case that I looked into pretty extensively to see how to address for this one, to ensure consistency between them. And after a fact, screening is always a little bit more difficult, and so there's, that's why the applicant was notified of that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So regarding that screening, so it could be the, it's not possible to do the screening, and then they would be not possible for them to have overnight or long-term storage, right?
Chair Burke, that is a potential risk because that is a requirement of exterior storage, is that it be screened. They may need to place, say, a tenant that wished to do the exterior storage on the southern side where it is screened versus then a tenant that didn't require that on the northern side if it couldn't.
Yep.
And at this time, without being able to see, I can't. I can't determine whether 147th would be able to see those or what that exterior storage would entail, so.
Okay. Thanks. Commissioner Kurtz?
Thank you, Chair. Just a question on the landscaping, maybe because I haven't been here long enough to know this, but maybe I'm just going to ask. Who decides on the types and the breeds of the trees and stuff like that? Is that the applicant or is that the city?
Chair Burke, Commissioner Kurtz, so the applicant brings forward a proposal, and largely the city does not amend that. However, we make suggestions or conditions based on the mix of different types to ensure you have no more than 10% of a genus, 5% of a species. I don't, I don't quite remember the full step down, but there's a standard practice in forestry and urban plantings that dictate that you don't plant it, say, all with pine trees in case something were to come through, like Dutch elms, like oak wilt, like Emerald Ashbore, to diversify the species within the city. And that's, those are the suggestions that we make and that our Natural Resources Coordinator reviews.
So that was my question, that was, do we do research on that to make sure that these particular breeds aren't bringing the beetles that we are getting every summer that don't go away, you know, and stuff like that?
Could some of them, yes. It meets that overall requirement that no more of the species within the community matched that 5, 10, 20%.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Alex? Seeing none, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we recommend approval of a 112,170 square foot spec industrial building on lot, Outlot A Carmella Edition located in the northwest corner of 147th Street and Johnny Cake Ridge Road, subject to the following conditions, 1 through 18. I will highlight, item number four has a 1.5% landscape requirement, and the entirety of five shall read, construction shall occur in conformance with the elevation plan dated January 4th, 2022.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Deekman, seconded by Commissioner Kurtz. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. It's on to city council. Thank you. The next item of business is item 5A, Temple Homes Detached Garage Variance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tina and Kelvin Tran own the property at 12889 Forest Court in Apple Valley, and they are seeking a variance, which will be described, again, the property 12889 Forest Court on the northeast sort of area generally of Galaxy Avenue and McAndrews Road, kind of in the northeastern part of the city. The variance requested will be to reduce the setback requirement from Galaxy Avenue from 40 feet to 32 feet in order to install a 624 square foot detached garage. As the planning commission will probably recall, the Temple Estates development was approved by the city May of last year, and that was a subdivision or a lot split of a large, single-family home. And there is a home existing on Lot 1, and that's the subject parcel. But Lot 1, as it stands today, or as it sits today, does not have a garage. It's relying on this detached building as a garage. The, when the development was reviewed and approved last summer, the developer at that time had intended to simply demolish the two detached buildings, and then a new home and garage would be constructed on Lot 2. And then on Lot 1, the plan was to have a building addition and garage addition as a part of that development. Since that time, the builder has been out and looked at the building and decided it's in good condition and would like to move it so that it can be used with the home on the other lot. He's working separately with Public Works because he wants to move the building. He needs a special permit to do that, to move a building on public streets out and around and through. So, but that's not part of the city's consideration this evening. It's just kind of the backstory of what he is proposing. So what he wants to do, again, the detached building, the detached garage, he'd like to move it and place it north and west of the home as it sits today. Again, 624 square feet would be the size of the building, or is the size of the building. The idea would be the garage doors would be oriented to the east as the home is going to be oriented to the east to Forest Court. The existing driveway off of Galaxy is required to be removed. So as we look at the requirements for a detached accessory building, setbacks for a building between 144 square feet and 750 square feet would be 10 feet from rear, 5 feet from side, and 20 feet from a right-of-way line, usually. But the code does state that in cases where a property butts up to Highway, Arterial, or Collector Street, there is an increased setback. So in this case, Galaxy Avenue is classified in the comprehensive plan as a major collector. And this is a little bit confusing, but the zoning code, then back to the zoning code, the requirement for a community collector in the zoning relates to a major collector in the comprehensive plan. A neighborhood collector in the zoning relates to minor collector in the comp plan. Anyway, the upshot is, the setback requirement is 40 feet, and the proposed distance would be 32 feet, so thus the petitioner is requesting the eight-foot variance. The picture, the plan that's shown, shows the building, the home, and then the building addition that was planned and reviewed by the planning commission last summer. So again, the idea is the proposed addition does contain a garage, and what the petitioner will be able to do by using or by placing the garage in this location is to do an overhead door and then get through access to the detached garage. A minimal driveway would be needed, and what it does is, until the addition is constructed, it does provide a garage for the home today. The home as it looks from Galaxy Avenue, the exterior is stucco with brown trim or black trim, dark trim. And this is a view of the proposed addition that was reviewed by the planning commission. Mix of materials is the comment that we wanted to make here, horizontal lap siding, vertical lap, and panelized system. The concern is that the existing building is a simple vinyl lap, and one of the conditions of approval would be that the exterior be upgraded to be compatible with the home. So when the city reviews requests for variances, it starts with the definition of a practical difficulty. The applicant proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner. Play to the applicant is due to circumstances unique to the property, the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character, and economic considerations alone do not constitute a practical difficulty. So with that, with that definition in hand, then we turn to the factors, special conditions applied to the structure or land that are particular to the property, the granting of the The granting of the variance will not be contrary to the intent of the chapter. Special conditions do not result from the actions of the owner applicant. Granting of the variance will not merely serve as a convenience, but is necessary to alleviate practical difficulty, and the variance requested is the minimum variance necessary. So with that, as staff was reviewing the request, one of the challenges is, are, one of the challenges for the development is that the site was created by the developer, by the petitioner. But the, the change in plans to use the detached garage do allow for that addition to move forward. It, it kind of is a modular addition. It flows well. So staff offers the following observations as findings. Petitioner wishes to use property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the code because the rear property line abuts Galaxy Avenue. The proposed location avoids the removal of significant trees and maintains a buffer between the subject property and the property to the north. The detached garage is placed on the lot in such a manner that only a small pad is constructed necessary for driveway access. Site coverage is 27%, well below 35% maximum required or allowed, and variance allows the proposed addition to proceed as planned. And then two conditions are suggested if the planning commission wishes to recommend approval. Exterior of the building shall be modified to match the exterior building materials of the home. So again, to kind of upgrade it a little bit, and no site work may begin until an NRMP is issued. So with that, Mr. Chair, we are, staff is recommending approval of the variance as requested, and I could stand for questions if there are any.
Commissioner Deekman?
Yeah, Kathy, in regards to the condition number one, what if the new addition is not put on? Then there, then there is no condition one? If there is no addition?
Chair Burke, Commissioner Deekman, plans have been submitted for the addition, so we're aware of what the design will be so we can do it based on the design.
Okay, and then when we say match, there's multiple materials. There's lap material, a vertical material, and then they, I don't know if it's, you called it a panel system?
Mm-hmm.
What's it supposed to match? Which one?
I would say that the, the horizontal lap siding is not consistent with what the plan is, so we would work with the builder on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Kurtz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kathy, can you go back to the screen with the photo of the garage and the new addition part of it?
Sure, this one?
Yes, so maybe I need to understand more. So what he's asking for is a variance for closer to Galaxy. So the blue part in between there, can't he go up a little bit further? You know where the attachment is, where the garage, and you say that he's going to drive through there or whatever?
Sure.
Why not just put it up further to the east? And then you don't have to have the variance, right? Or am I not seeing that correctly?
Yes, Chair Burke, Commissioner. The, the issue is that as the building gets closer to the house and the garage, they have to do more for fire protection. And there's a little, it's a little bit difficult to see, but it would require removing trees if they had to push it northward.
Okay.
So that's why they're.
I just couldn't understand why we would just push it up and then resolve the issue.
Right, right. The, it's shown right now to be five feet from the home. Anything less than six feet may require additional fire suppression. So he doesn't want to go any closer than that, and then the, the mature vegetation is important to maintain.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
Sure.
Any other questions for Kathy? Sounds like you've been through this in excruciating detail. Pleasure, the commission?
Mr. Chair, I move we recommend approval of a variance to reduce the setback from Galaxy Avenue from 40 feet to 32 feet for a 624 square foot detached garage based on the findings listed below, the findings one through five, and the conditions one and two as listed in the staff report.
It's been moved by Commissioner Deekman, seconded by Commissioner Scanlon. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries and goes on to the city council, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item of business is the 6A, the Planning Commissioner's Guide.
So, commissioners, just a quick question. I believe we have passed the planning commission books and everybody, I'm seeing head bobs, and you either have one or you don't. Is there anybody that doesn't? Do you, Commissioner Deekman, do you have?
Yes, sir, I am in possession of one of those.
Okay. We're good. Brianna's memo sufficiently explains it again. It's just a resource for the commissioners moving forward.
Next item of business is 6B, upcoming schedule, planning commission on January 19th, February 2nd, city council meeting Thursday, February 13th, and city council Thursday, February 27th.
Thank you, great summary.
Next item is item number seven. Your motion to adjourn?
No motion.
It's been moved by Commissioner Scanlon, seconded by Commissioner Kurtz. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? Stand adjourned.